We are excited to have you here and glad that you were able to travel here safely with your students to be recognized this evening. The students are here tonight, as you are probably aware, there's some familiar faces in the audience and some new ones also, but they're here because these students scored advanced on the state assessment last spring, on the Mexico Public Education Department State Assessment for either/or in combination of math, language arts, and science. And one of the exciting things about this year, and I want to make sure that we give our students a big round of applause, this is the largest number of advanced students that Gallup McKinley County Schools has ever had. I don't want to bore you with any data or graphs, but there is a couple of screens here in the front, just to kind of show you the trend of students in Gallup McKinley County Schools being advanced and being Board Scholars in the school district. In 2018, we used to have this event in the boardroom, and there was about a couple hundred students that were being recognized, and we would do it in two waves. Tonight, as you can see, there is now, in 2025, 1,090 recipients of the Board Scholar And so, a few years ago, we had to move to the Gallup High School Auditorium, and I'm thinking we might have to do, and then another group will come in later for the middle school and high school, and I'm thinking, given the crowd, we may have to do it in three waves next year, because we expect to see even higher, higher reach for our students to attain even more awards. Now, students, we've given you a round of applause. I would like you also, for your family and friends and parents who are here with you, they're a big part of your success, the most important part of your success, along with some of our help. So, students, if you could join me in giving your families a big round of applause. We appreciate your support of the school district in bringing your students to our schools and entrusting us with their education. We take this job very seriously. I want to make sure that we do the best job we can for them, so thank you, and thank you for being here. We also want to, if we have a microphone that has the battery working good here, all right, maybe that'll work. We also want to thank staff, teachers, and administration for the hard work that they have done this past year in preparing the students. It takes a lot of work, a lot of data to look at, a lot of efforts to adjust their lessons, to make sure they're meeting our students' needs, so if we could also give them a round of applause. And last but not least, what drives us partially is not obviously our students and their success, but we also have a school board who sets high standards for us to achieve, and so they give us the target and the direction of what they want to see us accomplish, and we're grateful to have two board members here this evening to help recognize your students. First, I want to introduce Vice President Michael Schaff. And Board Member Kevin Mitchell. And due to a family emergency and some health issues, we have to excuse Priscilla Benali, Board Member, and Charles Law. With that, we will begin. I want to also recognize Dr. Ashley Ryan, who is Assistant Superintendent, who is around doing a lot of work and helping us make sure we have teachers and staffs full, so we appreciate her with getting teachers here. Before we begin, we're going to definitely want a different microphone, so that we, students and families can hear the names. Test, test, all right. So with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Kristen Bischoff, Director of Instruction. She's, well, before that, I better give some, a little bit of direction for our students. As you're lined up, your principals will help you line up here on the left-hand side by school. When your name is called, you're going to come up, you're going to receive the award, and then you're going to shake the board member's hands and administration, then you're going to stand behind us until your school is done, and then we'll take a picture and allow parents to take pictures of their, of their students that way also. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Kristen Bischoff.
Good afternoon, good evening. We are going to begin with Crown Point Elementary, Principal Lisa Tolino.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first start off with welcoming and recognizing Ally Maniulito for ELA Math and Science. Rayem Elafi, ELA in Math. Ume Tabasim, who is not here, ELA in Math. Peyton Bebo, ELA. Luciana Bessenti, ELA. Naveya Bessenti, not here, ELA. Connor Deneja, not here, ELA. Kaylee Gordo, not here, ELA. Riara Hannah, not here, ELA. Manar Hussin, not here, ELA. Reham Elafi, ELA. Taraji Jim, ELA. Kaitlin Larson, ELA. Tegan McCray, ELA. Julia Murphy, ELA. Damon Perez Desiderio, ELA. Sadie Perez Desiderio, ELA. Olivia Sacco, ELA. Lexi Salate, ELA. Darius Tully, ELA.
Navajo Elementary, you're on deck. Rema Elementary, on deck.
I'm shaking from the tribe.
Give it a minute, you have your roster?
Yeah.
All right. Ethan Yazi, ELA, Math and Science. Luke Begay, ELA. Akira Benali, ELA. Zoe Benali, ELA. Matthew Connell, ELA. Reining Husky, ELA. Keanu Lee, ELA.
Thiru Elementary, Tohachi Elementary, you're on deck. And now I'd like to introduce to you Marlene Valesquez with Rema Elementary.
Mason Gibbons, ELA, Math. Phoenix Montahue, ELA, Math. Charlie Martin, ELA. Alena Ray, not present, ELA. Skylar Rodriguez, ELA, not present. Darceen Stevenson, ELA.
David'ski Elementary, on deck. Next, we have Thiru Elementary with Principal Candace Gonzalez.
Good evening. First off, we have Alana Quintana, ELA and Math. Mica Kagalitan, ELA and Math. Rachan Chilis, ELA and Math. Jade Ebride, ELA and Math. Alana Quintana, ELA and Math. Owen Bebo, ELA. Eli Clark, ELA. Alexandria Francisco, ELA. Julia Goodwin, ELA. Erica James, ELA. Aria Martinez, ELA. Amira Matthews, ELA. Kiara Mitchell, ELA. Ariel Parks, ELA. Dallas Watchman, ELA. And Shaden Yazi, ELA.
Next, we have Tohachi Elementary with Principal Elizabeth Schools. All right, we are awarding, first, Thea Ponce, ELA, Math and Science. We have Nicholas Acevrea, ELA and Math. We have Mason G. Samora, ELA and Math. We have Hayden Livingston, ELA and Math. We have River Verberg, ELA and Math. We have Dylan Holian, ELA. Madison Skeets, ELA. Abigail Sosi, ELA. Abel Washi, ELA. And Ethan Apache, Math. Next, we have David Skeet Elementary with Principal Olivia Lee. First, we have JB Antez, ELA and Math. Keishon Husky, ELA and Math. Haley Begay, ELA. Araya David, ELA. Lania DeBois, ELA. Desma Eddy, ELA. Willow Joyner, ELA. Noel Lee, ELA. Noel Lee, ELA. Malaya Martinez, ELA. Mia Solis, ELA. Next, we have Twin Lakes Elementary with Principal Alna Go.
Okay, we have Destiny Begay, ELA and Math. Liam Sosi, ELA and Math. Maggie Willines, ELA and Math. Caleb Yazi, ELA and Math. JaZariah Begay, ELA. Albertina Betsui, ELA. Hannah Betsui, ELA. Hayden Curly, ELA. Jeremiah Desiderio, ELA. Elena Dolphin, ELA. Trayden James, ELA. Peyton Long, ELA. Harper Watson, ELA.
Willow Bowman, ELA and Math. Nabahi Cordova, ELA and Math. Donre Hostine, ELA and Math. Santa Jones, ELA and Math. Allison Morris, ELA and Math. Cree Ashley, ELA. Juniper Jones, ELA. C.O. Peterson, ELA. Liliana Sandoval, ELA. Navea Tom, ELA. Leviathan Shaw, ELA. Amia Yazi, ELA. Ashley Yazi, ELA. Bryden Betsili, Math. Shine McCabe, Math. Keon Musket, Math. Keryun Yazi, Math.
Next, we have Katherine A. Miller Elementary with Principal Tyler Oaks.
Gage Garcia, ELA and Math. Kaylee Hubbard, ELA and Math. Hunter Touchin, ELA and Math. Enzo Begay, ELA. Tiberius Begay, ELA. Ayana Benali, ELA. Lila Bradley, ELA. Kaylee Shi, ELA. Mika Gray, ELA. Johnny Largo, ELA. Hunter Livingston, ELA. Nabahi Manygoats, ELA. LJ Peterson, ELA. Emily Ramos, ELA. Easton Yazi, ELA. Brody Yazi, ELA.
Next, we have Turpin Elementary with Principal Cynthia Mauer.
Good evening. First, we have Kale Balone, ELA and Math. Juniper Billiman, ELA and Math. Logan Black Goat, ELA and Math. Finnegan Foley, ELA and Math. Orion Pierce, ELA and Math. Malia Mimi Briggs, ELA and Science. Rakeya Ayesh, ELA. Sophia Begay, ELA. Liam Cadman, ELA. Haley Calvin, ELA. Yanaba Chuie, ELA. Quintina Francisco, ELA, not present. James Mahoudi, ELA, not present. Javin Pinto, ELA. Logan Tinnison, ELA. Abby Tarazas, ELA. Kaylee Yazi, ELA. Noah Begay, Math. Jules Estrada, Math. And Jolaya Martinez, Math.
Indian Hills Elementary, you're on Deck. Next, we have Stagecoach Elementary with Dean Randy Chrysler.
Cody Francis, E.L.A. and Math. Joel Livingston, E.L.A. and Math. Kendall Yazzy, E.L.A. and Math. Swayson Casaneda, E.L.A. Sriant Shaudri, E.L.A. Zacharia Chi, E.L.A. Megan DeJoly, E.L.A. Cruz Escahada, E.L.A. Kylie Escahada, E.L.A. Royce Holian, E.L.A. Anit Tom, E.L.A., not present. Octavia Torres, E.L.A. And Elias Pinto, Science.
Jefferson Elementary, you're on Deck. Next, we have Dal Norte Elementary with Principal Dr. Nancy Post.
Manuel Montoya, E.L.A., Math and Science. Amaya Ashley, E.L.A. and Math. Noah Benali, E.L.A. Zack Barbone, E.L.A. Penelope Garcia, E.L.A. Okay. Abriela Gonzalez, E.L.A. Ruben Kimball, E.L.A. Paula Lee, E.L.A. Cheyenne Lingayat, E.L.A. Lingayat. Lyel Long. Santiago Ortiz, E.L.A. Dalen Peterson, E.L.A. Elijah Plummer, E.L.A. Dion Rascon, E.L.A. Maribel Terazas Hernandez, E.L.A. Nathaniel Tom, E.L.A. Caitlin Sohenio, E.L.A. McCanna Sose, E.L.A. Jacob Valdez, E.L.A. Ricky Williams, E.L.A. Zaden Willie, E.L.A. Quan Yazzy, E.L.A. Ramaya Yo, E.L.A. Ayana James, Math.
Lincoln Elementary, Lincoln, you're on Deck. Next, we have Indian Hills Elementary with Principal Patricia Trujillo.
Aiden Pokinkito, E.L.A., Math and Science. Carissa Tan, E.L.A., Math and Science. Chase Bahi, E.L.A. and Math. Kason Berry, E.L.A. and Math. Katie Ellis, E.L.A. and Math. Kevin Martinez White Rock, E.L.A. and Math. Naya Yazzy, E.L.A. and Math. Eugene Alexiev, E.L.A. Vanessa Garcia, E.L.A. Tessa Lee, E.L.A. Julia Lee, E.L.A. Dallas Mazone, E.L.A. Madison Olivar, E.L.A. Bailey Vasquez, E.L.A. Jace West, E.L.A. Kaylin Yazzy, E.L.A.
Red Rock Elementary, you're on Deck. Next, we have Jefferson Elementary with Principal Dr... With Principal Dr. Connie Quair.
I know. Take off my glasses. Huthlizzi Siaco, E.L.A., Math and Science, not present. Jacob Gonzalez, E.L.A., Math and Science. Charles Soto, E.L.A., Math and Science. Huh? Who's for who? Okay. Brentley Spencer, E.L.A., Math and Science. Adeline Cole, E.L.A., Math. Yvette Cole, E.L.A., Math. Deandre Jones, E.L.A., Math. Mark Manuel, E.L.A., Math. Isaac Mingus, E.L.A., Math. Tyler Pat, E.L.A., Math. Ralph Swan, E.L.A., Math. Jet Tree, E.L.A., Math. Titan Whitman, E.L.A., Math. Stevie Ray Ashley, E.L.A., not present. Leila Cisco, E.L.A. Rebecca Collins, E.L.A. Canoa Davis, E.L.A. Mia Diaz, E.L.A. Ryan Eskamia, E.L.A. Amarian Greneer, E.L.A. Kalia Hoskey, E.L.A. Jaden Jim, E.L.A. Terilyn Johnson, E.L.A. Paige Khan, not present. Makailo Lee, E.L.A. Okay, Stevie Ray? Crystal Leslie, not present, E.L.A. Yelena Livingston, E.L.A. Jacob Lynch, E.L.A. Miles Mallett, E.L.A. Nicholas Martinez, E.L.A. Say that one again. Paige Khan, E.L.A. Akaden Nazwood, E.L.A. DeAndre Nez, E.L.A. Francis Nerzagre, E.L.A. Selena Perez, E.L.A. Trinity Sam, E.L.A. Cassidy Smith, E.L.A. Aurora Smith, E.L.A. Lanaya Thomas, E.L.A. Connor Tom, E.L.A. Danielle Velasco, E.L.A. Soraya Williams, E.L.A. Aiden Willie, E.L.A. Yana Willie, E.L.A. Dominic Burns, Math. Audrey Clyde, Math. Keon Hayes, Math. Milo Hostin, Math. April Lynch, Math. Callia Pines, not present, Math. Josiah Swan, Math. Tiara Whitman, Math. And Trent Whitman, Math. And Stevie Ray Ashley, E.L.A.
Next, we have Lincoln Elementary with Principal Nick Barrow.
Good evening. Eli Lovato, E.L.A., Math and Science. Lawrence Pimentel, E.L.A., Math and Science. Hunter Vargas, E.L.A., Math and Science. Quincy Gale, E.L.A., Math. Tyrell Livingston, E.L.A. and Math. Philip Ramirez, E.L.A. and Math. Genesis Robles, E.L.A. and Math. Alexia Sanchez, E.L.A. and Math. Chloe Torres, E.L.A. and Math. Aubrey Yazzy, E.L.A. and Math. Aleah Aragine, E.L.A. Tyler Bowman, E.L.A. Isaiah Christian, E.L.A. Armando Contreras Amador, E.L.A. St. O. Haswood, E.L.A. Mariana Hadameo. Mariana Hadameo, ELA. Shaquilla Kellywood, ELA. Nadia Martinez, ELA. Caleb Mullins, ELA. Rafael Murillo, ELA. Kayden Nash, ELA. John David Salinas, ELA. Isabel, ELA. Isabel Sandoval, ELA. Adia Ward, ELA. Nakoah Benali, Math only. Malik Tapi, Math.
And last but not least, Red Rock Elementary, Principal Lindsay Mingus.
Good evening, everyone. Blake Charlie, in ELA Math and Science. Deva Dodson, ELA Math and Science. Jace Boggs, ELA and Math. Susan Brown, ELA and Math. Audrey Hansi, ELA and Math. Taro Hoover, ELA and Math. Jack Langsum, ELA and Math. Paige Peterson, ELA and Math. Avery Sanchez, ELA and Math. Monroe Saucedo, ELA and Math. Riley Stacy, ELA and Math. Julia Thomas, ELA and Math. Sonia Thomas, ELA and Math. Bill Trong, ELA and Sci- ELA and Math. Wyatt Whitney, ELA and Math. Carter Yazi, ELA and Math. Miles Yellow Horse, ELA and Math. Janan Jojo Abad, ELA. Faith Alonso Chavez, ELA. Jocelyn Cadman, ELA. Rain Capio, ELA. Jacy On Charlie, ELA. Samuel Connell, ELA. Adam Cordova, ELA. Jacob Dallas, ELA. Alexander De La Cruz, ELA. Rhiannon Dubois, ELA. Charlie Groton, ELA. Jaden Hankins, ELA. James Harmon, ELA. Christopher Irvin, ELA. Caleb Johnson Higdon, ELA. Kyle Littlefield, ELA. Colter Littleman, ELA. Colton Livingston, ELA. Owen Livingston, ELA. Peyton Livingston, ELA. Tamia Molina, ELA. Jaden Romero Daniel, ELA. Athena Sisti, ELA. Daniel Stokes, ELA. Carmichael Thomas, ELA. Harley Villanueva, ELA. Jaylissa Viola, ELA. Donna Wasita, ELA. Evelyn Whitney, ELA. Angus Womack, ELA. Brooke Begay, Math. Dominic Saracino, Math. James Harmon.
Thirty-five.
Testing one-two, testing one-two-three, testing one-two-three, testing one-two.
Secondary Principals, please see Mrs. Sasha Blanco Ramirez for your rosters. Thank you.
Testing one-two-three, testing one-two-three, testing one-two-three.
All right, we're gonna get started. There's a, quite a few seats on this side if you want a seat. On the left side of the auditorium, your left. You have a chance to scoot in a little bit so we can get everybody seated. All right. Well, welcome. We appreciate you being here for the 2025 Gallup McKinley County Schools Board Scholar Awards Ceremony. We appreciate you getting here safely. And we know many of you drove a long way, some of a little shorter, but many of you drove a long ways to be here with your student. And we appreciate you being here again. Tonight, you're here because your student scored advanced for the state assessment, for the Public Education Department of New Mexico State Assessment for 2020, 2025 in the spring, last spring. And this is a huge accomplishment for your student. And what we're super excited about this year is this is the largest number of advanced students that are receiving Board Scholar Awards that we've ever had in the history of Gallup McKinley County Schools. So we appreciate you giving a nice round of applause to the students. But we also want to recognize the families and parents and friends who are here to support the students. So please, give them a round of applause also. We know it takes a lot of support to help our students be successful. It takes family, takes the students, of course. And we also want to thank and give a round of applause for the staff, teachers, and administration. We have a couple screens. I'm not gonna give you some math or some data for too long. I don't want to bore anybody. But there's some important data on the screen in the front of the building here, in the front of the auditorium. And we're super excited because, as you can see, we used to hold this ceremony in the boardroom, and we do it in a couple sessions. And we only had a couple hundred. You can see that graph over the last seven years. We started out with a few hundred students that were receiving Board Scholar Awards. We're now up to 1,090 Board Scholar Awards this year. That doesn't happen by chance. And there's a lot of work that goes into it from all of us here in this room and those who weren't able to make it tonight. But it's also the vision set for the district is set by the school board. They have set lofty goals for us and pushed us hard to make sure that we're growing faster than other school districts and in the top three of growth across New Mexico for a large school district. So we have two board members here tonight. We want to thank Secretary Michael Schaff for being here and supporting us. We also want to thank school board member Kevin We have a few board members missing tonight for family emergencies or other health-related concerns. Priscilla Benali, Charles Long, who's vice president, and Chris Mortensen, president. And last but not least, we have a few people on the end of the line here. Dr. Ashley Ryan, who was Assistant Superintendent for Human Resource, and Catherine Chrysler Assistant Superintendent for Maintenance and Facilities and Procurement. So this is how it's gonna go tonight. As you can see, we already have students lined up here on the right side by school. We'll announce your school, and then students, if you would come up, and your principals will help you get in line. You're going to come up when your name is read by your principal. We're gonna hand you the award. If you'd please shake everybody's hand and then wait in the back of us until all of your school is announced. And then we'll have you come to the front. And parents, feel free to come up and take pictures of your students at the end or also while they're receiving their award. So I'll turn the time now over to get us started by Kristin Bischoff, who is a Director of Instruction for Gallup McKinley County Schools. Kristin?
Good evening. We will begin with Crown Point Middle School. Principal Dr. Lawanda Notestine Henry.
Ayo Zephaniah Balabagin, ELA and Math. Ethan Begay, ELA and Math. Daisy Begay, ELA. Faith Begay, ELA. Autumn Charlie, ELA. Josiah Hudson, ELA. Alec Johnson, ELA.
On Deck Tohachi Mid and Chief Manulito. Next, we have Thru Middle School with Principal Nadine Gonzalez.
Good evening. Our first student, Elias Charlie, ELA and Math. Bravio Chischili, ELA and Math. Aubriana Dean, ELA and Math. Bryden Etsidi, ELA and Math. Brandon Francisco, ELA and Math. Jacoby J., ELA and Math. Lucius Johnson, ELA and Math. Aleah Kemp, ELA and Math. Ivan Martinez, ELA and Math. Tyvin Morgan, ELA and Math. Aiden Wilbur, ELA and Math. Rayan Vicenti, ELA. Abby Mundo, ELA. Gabriel Ortega, ELA. April Shorty, ELA. Sofia Flores Cruz, Math. Anthony Padilla, Math. Ariana Salcedo, Math. And Cheveline Thomas, Math.
Gallup Mid on Deck. Next, we have Tohachi Middle School with Principal Lucinda Bitsoy.
First up, we have Carl Ferreras, ELA, Math. Troy Lincoln, ELA and Math. Grace Sosie, ELA and Math. Austin Harrison, ELA and Math. Isaac Begay, ELA. Dakota Charlie, ELA. Miles Curly, ELA. Trevor Franklin, ELA. Kia Mike, ELA. Bailey Nez, ELA. Kayden Orley, ELA. Presley Peterson, ELA. Chase Tom, ELA. Wes Sosie, ELA. And Ray Lynn Redhair, Math.
John F. Kennedy, you're on Deck. All right. Next, we have Chief Manulito Middle School with Principal Felicia Sanchez.
First up, Delilah Bowie, ELA and Math. Aiden Grant, ELA and Math. Jakeen Haley. Roy Andrea Julian. Lilly Lee. Vera Lemon. Marion James Manuel. Sequoia Mark. Kester Pimentel. Roman Turk. Caske Valentino. Nicholas Wilson. Star Bahi. Avea Begay. Hayden Begay. Matea Begay. Ayana Benali. Noel Benali. Joy Capilio. Tempest Kobe. Matthias Dennison. Vanessa Dishcini, ELA. Eli Embry, ELA. Genesis Escargaga, ELA. Erwin Joe, ELA. Shanoa Largo, ELA. Aram Lee, ELA. Denalaya Lee, ELA. Lyden Long, ELA. Alicia Nay Matthews, ELA. Isabella Nunez, ELA. Tristan Orelli, ELA. Isaiah Pinto, ELA. Catalia Pullin, ELA. Julian Sanchez, ELA. Christian Silversmith, ELA. Jacob Stewart, ELA. Michael Swatzel, ELA. Russell Swatzel-Luhan, ELA. Logan Thomas, ELA. Kenzie Tom, ELA. Courtney Tom, ELA. Madison Tully, ELA. Raiden Washborn, ELA. Lila Watson, ELA. Jackson Yazi, ELA. Trish Yazi, ELA. Hadil Aldu, Math. Victor Alvarado Soto. Math. Hunter Avery, Math. Deandre Benali, Math. Eli Benali, Math. Paul Mallon, Math. And last but not least, Xander Silverman, Math.
Xander! Oh my God!
Navajo Middle School, you're on deck. Next, we have Gallup Middle School with Dean Candice McLean.
Celeste Collymore, ELA, Math and Science. Caleb Arviso, ELA and Math. Brandon Belmont, ELA, Math. Raylia Bowman, ELA, Math. J.C. Brown, ELA, Math. Matilda Bryant, ELA, Math. Sophia Jeffress, ELA, Math. Sawyer Makovich, ELA, Math. Juan Torres, ELA, Math. Eddie Varela, ELA, Math. Monae Baldonado Bentley, ELA. Connor Begay, ELA. Julian Chacon, ELA. Cooper Charlie, ELA. Leah Chavez, ELA. Luna Chi, ELA. Maya Chi, ELA. Adilia Evans, ELA. Ofelia Gonzalez, ELA. Micah Gordon, ELA. Adriano Guerrero, ELA. Miles King, ELA. Ryan Lamentino, ELA. Mika Livingston, ELA. Sydney Livingston, ELA. Ivy Lopez, ELA. Davay Lozano, ELA. Jennifer Manson, ELA. Harlow Manuelito, ELA. Giselle Martinez, ELA. Dakota Morris, ELA. Caprice Nez, ELA. Tyler Nota, ELA. Giselle Reyes, ELA. Jeremiah Roman, ELA. Alexa Romero, ELA. Azariah Romero Daniel, ELA. Gage Salazar, ELA. Johnny Sanchez, ELA. Mateo Sanchez, ELA. Saucedo, ELA. Skylar Scoopmeyer, ELA. Audie Taylor, ELA. Emery Thompson, ELA. Tavion Totus, ELA. Manuel Varela, ELA. Dashul Whitney, ELA. Journey Womack, ELA. Erin Wood, ELA. Teriah Yazi, ELA. Raylaia Yo, ELA. Jocelyn Zarate, ELA.
Rayma Middle School, you're on deck. Next, we have John F. Kennedy Middle School with Principal Kelly Fitzmaurice.
Abby Lee Berry in ELA and Math. Danica Carey in ELA and Math. Amias Chavez in ELA and Math. Scarlett Daychief in ELA and Math. Cheyenne Emerson in ELA and Math. Anthony Morales in ELA and Math. Draven Sam in ELA and Math. Diego Sanchez in ELA and Math. Calvin Shack in ELA and Math. Isabella Aragine in ELA. Dre Blanco in ELA. Chloe Clausen in ELA. Dillinger Embrywhite in ELA. Mason George in ELA. Olivia Hunkus in ELA. Marley Lastiona in ELA. Noah Lucero in ELA. Kaitlin Mann in ELA. Sadie Martinez in ELA. Seth Martinez in ELA. Matthew Minerich in ELA. Noah Minerich in ELA. Connor Parker in ELA. Steven Ponse in ELA. Violet Rubio in ELA. Alyssa Cisneros in ELA. Belle Smith in ELA. Laraya Thompson in ELA. Guadalupe Toledo in ELA. Casaya Sosie in ELA. Levi Vidalas in ELA. Junaya Walking Eagle in ELA. Elena Watson in ELA. Isaiah Yazi in ELA. Nevea Yazi in ELA. Adalina Chavez-Tiran in Math. Brianna Daniels in Math. Yuri Garcia in Math. Tyrese Randalls in Math. Xavier Rizzo in Math. Kyler Sam in Math. And Casey Smith in Math.
Good job, speed reader.
On deck, Navajo Pine High School. Next, we have Navajo Middle School with Principal Jessica Wilson.
Good evening. For Navajo Mid, we have Jackson Deskins, ELA and Math. Lilian Arcanita, ELA. Keanu Benali, ELA. Gunner Hunt, ELA. Alexandria Johnson, ELA. Harper Lee, ELA. Myron Francisco, Math.
Next, we have Rayma Middle School, Principal David Gibbons.
For Rayma Middle School, we have Brayden Alonso, ELA and Math. Marian Grassi, ELA and Math. Nia Lamson, ELA and Math. Kenley Martin, ELA and Math. Shane Martin-Mescal, ELA and Math. Owen McClelland, ELA and Math. Aaron Ray, ELA and Math. Paisley River, ELA and Math. Everett Cox, ELA. Catherine Dickens, ELA. Harmony Dooley, ELA. Baron Fuchs, Math. Kayden Leekia, Math. And Asher Simons, Math. Congratulations.
On deck, we have Rayma High School, Crown Point High School, and Theroux High School. And next, we have Navajo Pine High School with Principal- And next, we have Navajo Pine High School with Principal Jessica Wilson.
Hello again. For Navajo Pine High School, Jalen Benali, ELA. Natalie Curly, ELA. Righton Hardy, ELA. Tegan Lee, ELA. Jaden Scott, ELA. Jasmine Shirley, ELA. And Zoe Woody, ELA.
On deck, we have Crown Point High, Thiru High, Tohachi High. Next, we have Rayma High School, Principal David Gibbons.
For Rayma High School, we have Zaden Bond, ELA and math. Jackson Gibbons, ELA and math. Tresson Lamson, ELA and science. Avery Clausen, ELA. Carly Etzidi, ELA. Jacob Melikin, ELA. And Lauren Trumbull, SAT reading and writing. Congratulations.
Next, we have Crown Point High School, Principal Darrell Anton.
Okay, first up, we have Akadia Denny, ELA math. Autumn Pablo, ELA math. Tyus Bebo, ELA. Jessica Etzidi, ELA. Jade Gaddy, ELA. Kalen Gordo, ELA. Jaden John, ELA. Isaiah Juan Yazi, ELA. Rayanna Mike, ELA. Aiden Morris, ELA. Jaden Pablo, ELA. Savannah Pretty Weasel, ELA. Xavier Totichini, ELA. Wiree Tom, ELA. Elise Sosi, ELA. Erin Sosi, ELA. Larray Tully, ELA. And Zian Nez, SAT reading and writing.
Gallup Central High School, you're on deck. Next, we have Thiru High School, Principal Val Anton.
Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to Rogoshin Buon for ELA and math. Jaylee Gonzalez, ELA and science. Elizabeth Baker, ELA. Jade Bear Eagle, ELA. Jacob Bicenti, ELA. Drake Charlie, ELA. Ariana Damon, ELA. Leanna Delguerito, ELA. Soraya Duncan, ELA. Tarianna Edcity, ELA. Mackenzie Gleason, ELA. Jaden Johnson, ELA. Shelby Jones, ELA. Kedra Kenneth, ELA. Ava Loretto, ELA. Michael Martinez, ELA. Glenn McFadden, ELA. Chandler Sandoval, ELA. Cheyenne Steigels, ELA. Leila Vesper, ELA. Riley White, ELA. Angelica Rosales, math. Congratulations, students.
Gallup High School, you're on deck. Next, we have Tohachi High School, Principal Richard Moore.
Lila Apache, ELA. Kayden Barnhurst, ELA. Clarissa Bicente, ELA. Autumn Betsouy, ELA. Tajah Edwards, ELA. Serenity Heneo, ELA. Landon Henry, ELA. Jordan Johnston, ELA. Danaya Latanya, ELA. Haylin Livingston, ELA. Rosalina Lopez, ELA. Avery Malone, ELA. Vanessa Marian Nito, ELA. Haley Morse, ELA. Arrow Plummer, ELA. Madison Smith, ELA. Micah Yazi, ELA. Angela Sosi, SAT math.
Maya Mura High School, you're on deck. Next, we have Gallup Central High School with Principal Kristi Delcurto.
Landon Gammet, ELA and math. Cassusita Sanchez, ELA. Cara Beckman, SAT reading and writing. Mackenzie Eddy, SAT and reading and writing.
Next, we have Gallup High School with Principal Jack McFarland.
Okay, first up, we have Aiden Harrison, ELA and math. Lovely Thompson, ELA math. Zorion Begay, ELA. Jace Benali, ELA. Jacob Betsouy, ELA. Shay Betsouy, ELA. Norin Blood, ELA. Annalysia Bonilla, ELA. Darren Brown, ELA. Juanito Barola, ELA. Jaden Koho, ELA. Dion Cowboy, ELA. Destiny Dawes, ELA. Rain Fosek, ELA. Marquise Gorey, ELA. Mackenzie Henry, ELA. Demarian Hooper, ELA. Zachariaj Husky, ELA. Annabelle Jarrett, ELA. Dominic Jim, ELA. Michaela King, ELA. Ace Cayete, ELA. Elisa Lasonance, ELA. Donovan Labato Jr., ELA. Zacharia Madrid, ELA. Chloe Malin, ELA. Adrian Martinez, ELA. Giovanni Molina, ELA. Matthew Nez, ELA. Turquoise Sky Peschlikai, ELA. Chad Peters, ELA. Gianni Reyes, ELA. Orion Rogers, ELA. Angelina Sanchez, ELA. Sotera Smiley, ELA. Haley Tom, ELA. Bear Turk, ELA. Macy Baldess, ELA. Binver White Goat Jr., ELA. Raylanda Yazi, ELA. Amaris Yo, ELA. Alex Azir, SAT reading and writing. Justin Shee, SAT math.
Last, but actually I want to make sure everybody knew, we're going to publicize this tomorrow. Mi'am Mura, for school size of, in New Mexico, for schools larger than 800 students, they were number one in growth in the state of New Mexico.
All right. So first, we have Winterdale for ELA and math. John Paradise Jr., ELA and math. Chinmai Sadarson, ELA and math. Asmi Tataro, ELA and math. Luke Pozernik, ELA and science. Alexander Alexev, ELA. Kiara Arviso, ELA. Anaya Barnes, ELA. Luke Begay, ELA. Anna Balone, ELA. Phoebe Betam, ELA. Aubrey Billy, ELA. Miley Bitsy, ELA. Summer Brown, ELA. Naveya Charlie, ELA. Madison Chavez, ELA. Kyren Chi, ELA. Leila Dejani, ELA. Ariana David, ELA. Dion David, ELA. Jaden Delguarito, ELA. Molly Ellis, ELA. Esmeralda Escarcija, ELA. Ciara Garcia, ELA. Jackson Garro, ELA. Alea Guerrero, ELA. Asia Gutierrez, ELA. Karen Hernandez, ELA. Ryan James, ELA. Luca Joe, ELA. Terrell Johnson, ELA. Xylem Kinsel, ELA. Noah Lang, ELA. Tiara Lee, ELA. Robert Mortensen, ELA. Rain Mario, ELA. Dreamy Nelson, ELA. Mauricio Nelson, ELA. Caitlin Nez, ELA. Annabella Norgazari, ELA. Miriam Owice, ELA. Azalee Parish, ELA. Tallo Retan, ELA. Filoni Salazar, ELA. Caitlin Saracino, ELA. Sebastian Cesado, ELA. Anthony Situ, ELA. Alea Tom, ELA. Sierra Tom, ELA. Destiny Trimble, ELA. Genesis Trujillo, ELA. Deja Turner, ELA. Alexis Willie, ELA. Cherish Yazi, ELA. William Harmon, SAT reading, writing, and math, and NMASR science. Alvia Hayes, SAT reading, writing, and math. Adam Pozernik, SAT reading, writing, and math. Shriker Venegala, SAT reading, writing, and math. Katherine Starr, SAT reading and writing. Adriana Yazi, SAT math.
Thank you for being here tonight. Please travel home safely, and we appreciate your support of Gallup McKinley County Schools. Good night.